Good evening, everyone. Today is March 1st, 2022. This is a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council, which is a study session before our regular meeting, which will start at 6:45 PM. It's 5:30 now, and Madam City Clerk, would you please take the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Well, great. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And today, we have a study session on single-use plastics. And so let me go ahead and hand it over to our city manager, Jim Troop, to introduce the presenter. Take it away, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here, and I'm proud to present Ursula. She's our expert in this field, and so I'm going to actually turn it over to her.
Great, thank you. I will start sharing my screen. And hopefully, you can see a PowerPoint.
We can, thank you.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor Paul, council members. I'm Ursula Sorova, the Environmental Programs Manager for Cupertino. And I'm here, as Jim Troop said, to present recommendations for a single-use plastics ordinance, which is a city work program item. We have gathered a number of policy elements for consideration with a recommended phasing approach and look forward to your feedback and further direction. My slides should take about 14 minutes. The concerns with plastic are fairly well-known at this point, but as a quick background, there are a variety of issues with plastics. These include litter, leaching of chemicals into food, degrading into microplastics, being accidentally consumed by animals, including humans, and the challenging nature of the recycling markets, especially since the China National Sword set of policies went into effect in 2018. Cupertino's interest in reducing single-use plastics began with the Single-Use Plastic Bag Ordinance in 2013. Then we eliminated use of expanded polystyrene foam foodware in 2014. The zero-waste policy adopted by Council in 2017 supports enabling reusables wherever possible and reducing unnecessary single-use foodware and packaging. More recently, there has been increased interest in further controlling single-use plastics, and this ordinance became a city work program item in 2020. In 2018 and 19, Cupertino conducted detailed waste characterization studies, and we pulled together the extrapolated annual tons for takeout food containers to give a sense of the scope of the volume. As noted here, pre-COVID, we were generating 300 tons per year of disposable foodware. It is likely higher today. I will note that this shows items discarded in Cupertino, so it could include containers brought in from outside the city. Just as a quick reminder about our local recycling and composting programs, Cupertino accepts empty, clean, and dry plastic cups and containers for recycling, but not expanded polystyrene foam foodware or compostable plastics. And we also accept aluminum containers and clean foil. And we accept fiber-based foodware, but not compostable plastics. The exception to that is BPI-certified compostable plastic bags used to collect food scraps. Because of the concerns with plastics already mentioned, Cupertino now desires to further restrict single-use plastic foodware, even if it is locally recyclable. To help meet the goals of the city council under this work program item, we have prepared proposed amendments to Municipal Code Chapter 915, which is the section of code that prohibits expanded polystyrene foam foodware. These would enact a dramatic shift away from single-use plastic foodware and toward compostable and reusable foodware. The first phase would allow us to locally enforce state law AB 1276, which requires that no accessories, such as utensils, straws, or condiment packets, be provided unless a customer asks for them. That includes online takeout and delivery orders. One year later, in 2023, Phase 2 would prohibit the use of single-use plastic and compostable plastic foodware. Instead of plastic, we'd require fiber-based cups and containers, such as paper, paperboard, bagasse, and wood or bamboo utensils, all of which are compostable in our organics program. We would also allow aluminum-foil-based items, which are recyclable. While fiber-based products are accepted for composting in Cupertino, they are not as valuable an input to the composting process as food scraps or yard trimmings, and they still require production inputs for just a few minutes of use. This is why shifting to reusable foodware wherever possible better addresses resource use, health, economic, and environmental concerns. For those reasons, reusable foodware is recommended for dining in. There would also be a ban on local sale of expanded foam foodware and compostable plastic foodware. The reason we are recommending the ban on both the use and sale of compostable plastic containers and utensils is that those are not accepted in Cupertino's organics program. They are a contaminant to the recycling program. And if thrown away as garbage, they would go to landfill and generate methane. These items tend to be more expensive than other types of foodware, but essentially are marketing claims about compostability that are not able to be realized in Cupertino's waste management program. Understanding that these requirements could present challenges to some businesses, we have included a number of temporary exemptions. These could be applied for in cases where extra time is needed or there is significant economic hardship, or in cases where there is no compliant product that meets the specific needs of a food product. Additionally, as specified by AB 1276, small quantities of plastic straws can be kept on hand to provide to people who may need them. The details of some of these exemptions would need to be defined. For instance, boba tea drinks are popular in Cupertino, and often, they are prepared in a clear plastic cup that has film-plastic heat sealed across the top, that the pointed plastic straw can be stabbed through. There is not a see-through fiber-based alternative, but apparently, it is possible to heat-seal the film-plastic onto a fiber-based cup just without as strong a seal. Or there's the option to use a lid instead of a seal. Is this type of drink packaging a unique packaging hardship? I will pass along that during in-person visits in the past few days, it was noted that 15 out of 24 places visited used the heat-sealing method of preparation, and seven owners had specific concerns about losing business, being out of step with surrounding cities, being part of a franchise with certain requirements, and feel that being able to see the drink through the clear plastic is important to the business model. We look forward to the council's thoughts on this question. A few policy elements are recommended for future consideration, which are prohibiting the local sale of traditional plastic single-use foodware, banning sale of other expanded polystyrene items, like packing blocks and peanuts and single-use ice chests, considering charges on single-use foodware items to drive more use of bring-your-own and reusable foodware, and requiring that a certain percentage of prepared food and beverage sales at large events be in reusable foodware. To provide a bit more context for the concept of the cup-and-container charge idea, charging for single-use foodware items can incentivize using reusable alternatives, the way stores currently charge for grocery bags. However, with the extreme increase in pre-ordered and delivered takeout food and beverages because of COVID, a situation exists now in which it is not possible to easily use a reusable alternative the way there is with walking into a coffee shop with a travel mug or into a grocery store with a reusable bag. Basically, a charge would be incentivizing a behavior that is not readily available if you're trying to avoid eating on-site at a restaurant because of the pandemic. Which brings us to additional recommendations made by the Sustainability Commission. They recommend that we enable a local pilot of reusable foodware for takeout orders. There are businesses that provide that service, and these pictures on the right of the cup and the container show three of them that are operating in the Bay Area. According to our surveys from last summer, there is interest to try it, out both by customers and businesses. The Commission also recommended offering technical and financial assistance to businesses during the lead-up to the effective date of an ordinance, which would mean hiring a consultant with deep knowledge about food service to assist businesses in finding compliant alternatives and connecting them with funding opportunities for switching out items if needed. The Commission also requested that Cupertino's Single-Use Carry-Out Bag Ordinance be amended to ban plastic bags for takeout food orders and to require compostable produce bags. As part of the survey work we did last summer, we asked about what types of foodware businesses are currently using, and not too surprisingly, most are using a combination of types of foodware. So it is tricky to predict the economic impact to any given business. However, we did set out to find out how the prices of different containers compare and discovered that the staff at the City of Mountain View had just prepared an excellent set of graphs on this topic last fall when they brought their foodware ordinance to their city council. So we asked their permission to see their data and share these great images. We did check the current pricing and found it to be pretty consistent with what they had gathered just a few months ago. The full set of graphs is in your packet, but this graph is specific to clamshell containers. The line inside the box is the median price of the item, and the lines or whiskers above and below show the maximum and minimum prices found, excluding statistical outliers. What they found is that switching to the fiber-based or aluminum-foil-based products we've talked about here are likely to be a mix of cost increases and savings depending on the item, quantities, and sources. We created this table as well that shows the expected impact based on type of business. This table is a little small to see on a slide, but it's on page 7 of the staff report. And we tried to just break it up to show the different types of businesses and what we anticipated might be the impact. While it may not seem intuitive, businesses that use mostly single-use foodware for dining in can save money by switching to reusables, even considering dishwashing and labor. That is according to Rethink Disposable, which has helped close to 300 businesses in the Bay Area make the switch and in Los Angeles. That said, there might be some food service providers who cannot accommodate switching to reusables with current dishwashing capacity. So that might be a situation where a temporary waiver could be granted for extra time. Meanwhile, 56.7% of businesses were interested in technical and financial assistance to help, and 65.3% wanted to learn more about reusable-to-go foodware. Nearby jurisdictions are taking a variety of actions with foodware regulations. Mountain View just adopted an ordinance to require fiber-based compostables or aluminum-foil-based containers starting in January 2023. And San Mateo County is rolling out their model ordinance, which is being adopted by some of the cities there, which also requires fiber-based foodware. And the same for the city of Alameda. These logos are from Alameda and San Mateo County. This table, which is on page 9 of the staff report, shows additional jurisdictions and their foodware regulations. There are a lot of small differences in the ordinances, so it's a little challenging to show all the variations, but this gives a sense of how these efforts are rolling out or are planned. Requiring reusables for dine-in would put Cupertino as the first in Santa Clara County to make that requirement. And here is the rest of that table, which shows that banning the retail sale of expanded polystyrene foam foodware would have us joining Mountain View, Palo Alto, and Sunnyvale. But banning the sale of compostable plastics would be something new in the county. In an attempt to understand current practices and concerns, we conducted outreach in summer 2021. Our consultant, Environmental Innovations, partnered with a team from the Peninsula Chinese Business Association to conduct in-person interviews with food businesses. And they ultimately conducted 88 in-person visits and gathered a total of 100 survey responses. We translated the survey questions into Chinese and Spanish, but the outreach team reported that they conducted the surveys in English with only occasional need to explain complicated points in another language. Our hope was that business owners and managers would feel more comfortable answering questions with people who were not city employees. And we were very pleased with the high number of responses, which was approximately 51% of food businesses pulled from the business license database. We also made an effort to include all types of food facilities, from independently owned to franchise, dine-in and fast food cafes and boba places, large and small. Main concerns about switching away from plastic were the cost to switch and concern that disposal of plastics are crucial for their operations and takeout orders. The specialized machines that heat-seal film-plastic onto a plastic cup of boba were specifically mentioned. Together with our consultant, we reached out to a variety of special interest groups, as shown here. Each had specific areas of support or concern, such as not wanting any increased cost to be passed along, preferences for food deliveries in plastic bags, and situations where there is limited ability to wash dishes. After promoting a survey for customers via social media presentations and at Fall Festival, we received 111 survey responses that indicated customers are worried about single-use. They support moving away from single-use plastic, are concerned about single-use foodware in general, and that they would continue to support businesses if they switched to non-plastic alternatives. Over 87% said they've received unwanted utensils, napkins, or condiments with their takeout orders. We really wanted food businesses to be aware of this process, so we reached out in a variety of ways to encourage people to tune into this study session or respond via the Engage page to let their voices be heard. Looking online, we noticed that there seemed to be more boba tea places than we had on our list. So we hand-delivered 24 postcards via in-person drop-off as well as mailing them out to the list that we had. Our next steps depend on direction received this evening, but if directed to move forward, we have April in mind for possible first and second readings. That concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ursula. Let's go to our members of the public now to see if there are any people who have comments. I do see one hand raised, and that is from a person labeled as Jen Guest and then Lisa Warren. And so for our members of the public, you'll have three minutes to give your comments. And as long as your Zoom hand is raised by the end of the first person's comments, I'll call on you for the comments. And so Jen, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. This is Jenny. I'm never sure what my persona is going to be. Anyway, this was a very interesting presentation. And I just had, I had a couple of comments and just one question. One question is, can the city? I don't know. Can the city ban Safeway from selling certain types of foodware or forks and knives and spoons that are disposable? Is that, is that something the city can do to a Safeway in the city? I mean, I'm going to be neutral on this because, you know, there are pros and cons to this. But I just was wondering about what powers the city had to do that. And then I'll just say, in terms of my own personal experience, I have a relative who's elderly who needs to carry her own straws with her because she has difficulty swallowing. So it is good to remember that there are certain people in the public that need to have straws available. She does carry them with her when we go out to eat. Also, my, one experience with paper straws is that after 10 minutes, they collapse. And you're trying to drink something, and you get a mouthful of dissolved styro, paper. So if there's, maybe they have different things that they can use for straws to try and reinforce them. Yes, I understand there are problems with plastic straws, animals, squirrels, et cetera. They're probably not a good plan to have. But I hope that someone can come up with another type of a straw that is not going to collapse or else have something that's a paper product that doesn't, like, I've noticed that if you have a very cold drink, that they will get soggy after a few minutes. And if you have a hot drink, they will collapse also. So you know what? I just gave up, and I just drink water all the time. So it's healthier for you. Anyway, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much, Jennifer. And our next speaker is Lisa Warren, followed by Gwen Azar. And Gwen is our final hand raised, and so will be our last speaker on this item. Lisa, welcome.
Thank you, and thank you, Ursula, for a great, comprehensive report. I, I always feel like there's a sort of a disadvantage that the public talks first because I'm sure some of our council members are going to bring up some very good points. But given that I don't know what those are going to be and whether to agree or disagree with them, I say, go for it. Do the best you can. Do it all. Please. And in some ways, even if it's an increase in cost, I'm wondering for, just, you know, maybe a garbage company, maybe recology or someone would chip in, and maybe that was part of the report that I didn't see. But there's going to be a lot less cleanup, so money is saved there. I don't know. I just say, go for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next and final speaker is Gwen Azar. Welcome, Gwen. Gwen, if you can hear me, you'll need to unmute your microphone.
Hi, sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Paul. And thank you, Ursula, for that great presentation. It was very comprehensive. So yeah, my name is Gwen Azar. I'm currently a senior at Cupertino High School, and I'm here representing our Cupertino chapter of Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action. And I just wanted to say it's so great to see progress on this ordinance as it's something that I remember advocating for a few years ago, before the pandemic, actually. I do believe that this is going to be a very necessary change in our society at a large, and it's very encouraging to see Cupertino stepping up and joining the efforts of other municipalities in the area leading the way in reducing our plastic waste. And yeah, I just wanted to share support for myself as a young person and say that the sentiment is definitely shared among a lot of my friends and other youth that I know, the desire to reduce plastics and the concern over the effects of the plastic waste on the planet. And yeah, I look forward to seeing where the ordinance goes and wanted to express a shared sentiment as the last speaker of taking this ordinance as far as you can and making it as aggressive as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Gwen. Let me bring this back up to council now. And so council, if there are any questions or comments at this time, I'll go ahead and, let's go ahead and allocate five minutes for each of us. And so I don't have any hands raised at this time, but Vice Mayor Chow just raised hers. Vice Mayor Chow. And unmute.
Jennifer, there is bamboo straws now. If you go to the boba shop next to Marina, they have bamboo straws, and it's pretty strong. And Taiwan actually has just passed some pretty strong plastic ban. So likely, a lot of them have mother stores in Taiwan. They might have to follow the procedure. But they are, by 2030, they want to have a blanket ban on disposable cups and plastic bags. And so likely, the cups might still have, need to wait a few years, but I think it's coming. And then my question is, it seems this applies only to Cupertino food retails. How about businesses who actually produce products that's plastic wrapped? How about non-food plastic packaging? And how about companies, cafeterias? Are they using plastic products? How about school district, Indiana College? Are they using plastic products? Shouldn't the ordinance apply to them too? But then how about food delivered or catered by a company outside of Cupertino but delivered to a company here? Are they required to comply? Because otherwise, businesses here are at a disadvantage in competing with others. So those are my questions.
Great. Well, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow.
Sorry, one more thing is, with a paper container with plastic lid allowed, because that's popular in Taiwan when you have to hold noodles or soup. The cup will be plastic, but you need a plastic lid in order to have that tight seal. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And so I'll just bring it back to staff. Ursula, did you want to address the Vice Mayor's questions at this time?
Sure, I can try to do that. So I heard a question about non-food packaging as a question. And I'm trying to remember if it was, what the scope of that was. So that might be something I'll need more.
I mean, it seems the ordinance is applied to only food product. How about other products produced by Cupertino business that use packaging as plastic? Shouldn't they move away from plastic?
Right. So we-
Somewhere in our timeline, I guess.
Yeah, we did focus on the foodware, but we did entertain for consideration slightly later, like banning the local use and sale of the foam peanuts and foam packing blocks. But we didn't get into other types of plastic packaging, of which we know there is a great, great deal. So that would be something we'd have to explore more to give a good answer to that. But you also asked about company cafeterias.
Company cafeterias, school districts.
School districts. Yeah, so company cafeterias would be food providers under the definition of food provider that we have in the draft ordinance. School districts are, I'm looking at Chris's square. He can't tell. But school districts, I always think, are a little bit outside our, they don't really have to comply with our local jurisdictions because they're more like a state entity. But Chris might, we can certainly work with them and encourage them. And Palo Alto has worked with and encouraged their local school district. But Chris can weigh in.
They generate a lot of waste, though.
They do.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, so, I mean, that's not, that's not a specific issue we looked at. I think we would definitely need to look at, you know, what our scope of authority is, if any, is over the school districts, over, I mean, college district. I would say that, you know, regardless of the authority, I'm sure that's something that we would want to do in a collaborative manner with, you know, those sister agencies.
Yeah. And then the paper container with plastic lids. Would that-
Yes. We stayed silent on plastic lids just because there's not really a good, fully safe alternative out there. And that's a similar approach that San Mateo County took, where you just don't have something, you know, that meets the need of, you know, tilting and keeping you safe from spilling and all that that can securely fit onto the paper. At this moment, there are some paper lids out there, but we decided to stay silent on the plastic lids At this moment, there are some paper lids out there, but we decided to stay silent on the plastic lids for the moment, for more safety.
Thank you for the Sustainability Commission for the idea of reusable plastic. I saw that there are some companies who do that, and customers can bring back the container and then get a new one, or they can keep it for a minor charge, yeah.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. You have about a minute left, and I'll go on to Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Thank you so much, Ursula, for the report. I did notice that Mr. Zarelli is on the Zoom, and I was wondering if he would like to talk and say perhaps, from recology's point of view, if they have an opinion about this, and perhaps mention something about plastics three through seven and the market there, if he's willing to. I can't quite tell.
Councilmember Moore, Mayor Paul, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Welcome.
Yes, myself, recology supports the staff report of, you know, I think eliminating plastics that are not recyclable. And, you know, back to three Rs, reuse, reduce, and recycle. I think it's a good policy, especially as the plastic markets get more, you know, difficult to find homes for. So we support it.
Great, well, thanks, Councilmember Moore.
I'm unmuted. Okay, so is it, so if I go to Starbucks right now, we get to the paper cup, and it has the plastic lid, and it's recyclable. So I think what I'm hearing is that the preference is that we retain that recyclable lid as opposed to requiring them to go to a compostable one. Is that correct? Or, I'm not really sure which one's better.
Yeah, John can speak. I would say that the plastic lid is probably not really realistically going to get recycled, and the compostable plastic one wouldn't, you know, be compostable either, but John, go.
I agree with Ursula. Compostable is much better, you know, as you get into the small plastic, plastic lids, film plastic, it's hard to capture in the, you know, processing waste stream, so compostable is definitely better than plastics.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then, in the table that you have, figure five prohibiting the sale of the polystyrene ice chests, I'm personally for that, if that could be something that the other council members would want to add that on. And I'm concerned, like when I go to the grocery store, I'll see two different kinds of plastic bags for produce. There'll be a thicker, clear one, and then there'll be the green compostable one. Which one should we use? And can we, if we were to mandate something, would it be the green compostable and the paper sacks that they're offering? Or what is your thought there?
The Sustainability Commission, you know, did recommend going to the compostable produce bag, right, as a requirement, which, you know, if they were BPI certified compostable plastic bags, that would be acceptable for use in collecting food scraps, for instance, locally. So there could be kind of a dual use, right? So I think that's an interesting suggestion. You know, so if we did want to look in that direction, we could do a little bit more research on that, but certainly, other jurisdictions have started to go that way.
Okay, thank you. And I think the boba tea problem is significant. Did you happen to have a final count? Are we over thirty boba tea places in the city?
I think twenty-four was where we got that we're either all boba or served boba as part of their larger business. So it's a fairly significant percentage, you know, it's at least ten percent probably of the food providers in Cupertino, so not insignificant.
Okay, and so the issue is about having the look of the tapioca and the whatever flavor that you're having, and that is, that's the issue?
Well, yeah, and they already have machinery, you know, to do the heat sealing, and so that's a whole thing.
Okay, so they've already made an expense there. Okay, that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. You have about a minute left as well, so go on to Councilmember Willie.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So, thank you, Ursula. Good presentation and good questions from the other councils, so it's not like I have much to ask, but I do have a couple of things. Your, about your third slide, three hundred tons per year, is that just Cupertino?
Sorry, scrolling over to the mute button. Yes, that is just from our own waste characterization study that we did, and that was pre-COVID, so we know that the disposable foodware has gone up since then. So that's probably a very conservative extrapolation at this point.
Okay, I mean, to me, that speaks to the magnitude and the reason why we should be looking at this. It's not small, it's big. So the next question, of course, you know, we need to, it's obvious, we need to conserve more, we need to recycle more. So in that aspect, wow, this sounds important and good to do. I would ask a question, though, you know, the carbon footprint, you know, is a big issue for us, and the temperature rise, is there any improvement? Or is it even, oh, in the worst direction, making the components out of compostable ones as opposed to these superfast plastic machines? Is there any impact, hopefully a reduction, in our footprint, carbon footprint?
That is a super interesting question, actually, and I don't have the data right at my fingertips, but that's been investigated, you know, just because something is a certain material or is compostable doesn't necessarily mean that from a life cycle analysis standpoint, it's overall better in terms of greenhouse gas emissions. So that's a question I could research and report back on.
I think that would be good, because anything that helps with a greenhouse gas reduction, I mean, boy, I think you're going to get a lot more proponents. So then, the next question, you know, on one of the slides, it said, you know, new options, you know, compostable or wood. We, of course, we recycle a lot of paper. I mean, even when I go into Staples and you go to buy computer paper, and it says one hundred percent recycled material. But we're essentially saying the items are all going to be compostable, not recyclable like paper. So are we actually reducing, are we actually recycling? With plastics, we can, hopefully, we're actually recycling. But when we compost, we've now lost those items or the materials that those items consisted of. So is there something you can say about the compostable and using up resources versus recyclables that are at least keeping, kind of like paper, while it's staying with another life and another life and another life?
So recycling plastics, I mean, assuming that they're clean enough and dry enough, and, you know, maybe are hopefully a number one or a two to really have a go of it in life, you know, to go on to become something recycled, they're often downcycled, right? So PET, for instance, plastic water bottle plastic gets used to make like fleece clothing or carpets. So then, that's not something you're going to be able to put in your recycle bin, right? So that's what we call the downcycling. So that's one of the reasons, yeah.
I think you mean, it would still go in the recycling bin, but it wouldn't go in the compostable bin? Or those plastic bottles, especially during the pandemic? You know, the refill machines at Safeway and stuff, you know, you just don't know how safe they are. So we're going through an awful lot more of plastic bottles?
Well, plastic waters, bottles for water are number one plastic, very desirable on the market. I'm just saying that they don't get recycled over and over and over again the way aluminum does, for instance. It tends to be like maybe one or two cycles, and then it's made into carpet, and then that's like the end of the line, right? Composting is actually, I mean, the great thing about compostable foodware is if it has food scraps on it, food remnants, you know, you can put that whole thing into the green bin, the green cart, you know, and that's, you know, compostable material holding food scraps, it's a whole compostable thing, and it goes into the green bin, it gets made into compost, and it starts the great, you know, cycle of life again, to help something grow somewhere. So that's, you know, those are the way I think about it.
Yeah, so that handles the technical aspects, so then the economic. So while we're nearing the end of the stay-at-home, you know, so hopefully, more people will be getting back out to the restaurants and food businesses. But we are still in the pandemic, and so in that regard, I would have some potential concern about additional charges to struggling food businesses. You know, they've really been hit hard, outdoor dining, you know, all kinds of things that they hadn't had to consider in their financial picture before. And so, in that regard, I would be concerned, but I feel I can support, you know, that we do a pilot. So we do a pilot for six months, and I wouldn't say it would have to be a mandatory pilot, where again, if businesses are really struggling, maybe just barely getting by, and then we throw this on them. But a pilot that the businesses can opt in, and maybe we even provide some type of incentive. And then, share with them at the end of the pilot, let's assume everything goes great, then share with them at the end of the pilot how the other businesses were able to move into this new way of doing business, and what kind of financial implications. It's just unknowns right now, and businesses that are struggling, wow, I struggle on that. But it's time, it's definitely time, so I think we should be moving forward. I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. I was just about to cut you off. I actually pushed over a couple of my minutes over to you, so let's go on to, I wanted to hold on to, you know, a little bit of time. So Councilmember Way, let's go with you next.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. First, I really want to thank Ursula and our staff for answering my multiple questions in really good detail and research. For example, whether incentive or, you know, fine will work for the extra charge, will work for customers. And so there are two points I would like maybe a little bit more elaboration. First is, you know, I know we can do this ourselves, but our staff, you know, may have a lot of expertise. So, you know, when the report mentioned that we should, maybe we could hire a consultant to support our small businesses, so I asked the reasons why, and I really liked the answers, so maybe Ursula can expand that more. You know, what our staff cannot do to support our business where the consultant has expertise, and they can really help the small business to navigate and maybe procure products and things like that. So Ursula, you might want to elaborate that, because I really liked the answers. And also, another point is whether we can collaborate with our neighboring cities, like Sunnyvale or Mountain View, because they have two, they all have different implementations. If we can sort of work together so that our businesses are on a competitive level ground with other neighboring businesses, I know there are some challenging factors, but maybe our city council members and our community members can help too, our business partners can help too. So maybe elaborate a little bit more on that.
Sure, absolutely. So, you know, our staff is wonderful, but we don't work in food service every day, right? So to come in and try to tell a business, like, you got to use this, and you got to do that with your process, you know, it just doesn't seem very sensitive. And there are these consultants that have done this actual work, where they've come out of food service, they understand about food safety and all those rules, and can really speak to different kinds of products and even workflow that can help make these kinds of new changes work. So that's where I would be in favor of hiring someone with that kind of expertise to be the one to work with the businesses, because, you know, I just don't have that depth of knowledge. And then, in terms of collaborating with the nearby cities, you know, I love that idea, but, you know, I'm thinking about everyone's individual council process, you know, and I did answer to Councilmember Way's questions. You know, there was an initial, pre-COVID, there was a work group at the county level working on a model ordinance, and there was some kind of traction around that, and then COVID came and derailed all that. And in the meantime, cities have started making their own little progress. So one, you know, one city has already a zero-waste plan they're working on in multiple phases. One city's adopted already one little thing. So trying to, you know, get everyone pulling together, you know, it seems challenging. I don't know that it's impossible, but, you know, that would certainly make it easy for everybody. If we all went together, that would be easier. But how to get from here to there, that's, I welcome thoughts on that.
So just follow up, do you think that we can maybe approach the county again to, you know, coordinate this? Would that be a good idea?
There is definitely interest at the RWRC TAC level. You know, we have spent a lot of time and energy on thirteen eighty-three requirements with the county TAC, but there is still interest in single-use plastics, and there's been talk of, you know, maybe a regional reusable-to-go wear pilot of some kind. There's, obviously, people are sharing their notes on their individual ordinances with foodware. So it could be raised again there, for sure.
All right, thank you.
Great, thanks. So thanks very much, Ursula, and I have a couple of questions. And my first one is, I think, a little bit more practical. You had mentioned aluminum foil as being a potential good alternative. Now, when it comes to the foodware, when you have dirty aluminum foil, where does that go? Is the consumer expected to clean that off before it goes into recycling? Or, I imagine it wouldn't go into compost, right? So what's the, yeah?
Right, and the foil-based foodware would include like the lightweight aluminum containers that you might have seen, you know, for taking home leftovers or something, or even for takeout, those lightweight containers with a paper-based lid. But foil, yeah, I mean, if you're peeling off, what I'm thinking about is a burrito, right? The first part you peel off is probably stays pretty clean, you could wad that up and, you know, recycle it. Once it's dirty, then it's like any dirty container for recycling. If it's really coated in stuff, you just want to throw that away. If you could wipe it off, then great, put it in recycling. So it is a little challenging, foil, yeah.
Okay, so there's really no, there's no good solution for foil that's just really soiled? You shouldn't put it in recycling, because it sounds like it's going to end up in a landfill, probably, anyway?
Probably, yeah.
Okay. Now, when we talk about banning compostable plastics, I think it's nice to see that the industry has an idea of trying to move towards, you know, trying to move towards helping the problem. But if our recycling services aren't able to take in compostable plastics, like forks and knives and spoons, and our response to that at this point is to ban the use of compostable plastics, at least in certain contexts, what's the kind of thinking going forward in terms of, if the industry and technology advances to a point where those compostable plastics are indeed, you know, repurposable, if not in the recycling context, then, you know, in the context of compost or something else? So what I'm kind of thinking and trying to get at is the idea that if we enact legislation, what can we put into it such that we're compelled to visit this, you know, vis-à-vis what will hopefully be some changing industrial and technology-based standards?
Yeah, I like that thinking a lot. You know, I took pains to say that currently, you know, we cannot accept those items, you know, they're not wanted, but that doesn't preclude some tech leap forward that enables that in the future, or a different way, or a different method, or something. I don't know if John can speak at all to possibilities that he's heard about, just that currently, they're not. But I like the idea of building something in where we revisit it periodically to see if there are any products out there that can be composted, or some change on the processor side that enables that.
I see. So, I mean, I'm not sure if that would be something we could build in legislatively to compel a reexamination every so often. I mean, that's not something I have heard of in an ordinance, but I guess-
I think we could meet it with saying that we're limiting it to items that we accept for composting. And if those items change, then the ordinance would cover that. You know, currently, we only cover this amount of things, but if something else becomes able, then that would get folded in.
Right, right. Yeah, no, thanks for that. I mean, I think that that's definitely one way of, you know, looking at the overall problem, and it's just such a wide-ranging issue right now. And as people point out, you know, the plastics in food and in the restaurant industry, they're only one piece of the equation, right? I mean, we certainly, I think, to really solve this problem, need to figure out some of the things that we can be doing on a technological, you know, level, a material science level, which is, you know, a big reason why I'm having this initial Mayor's Cup Challenge focused on the issue of plastics. And I was happy to partner with yourself and staff on kind of taking on, you know, a pragmatic part of the problem at this point. But, yeah, certainly, it's better than doing nothing, right? I mean, we are better off, you know, trying to tackle the problem legislatively, but I guess it does raise some other questions with regard to economic viability, you know, the pragmatic effects of, you know, what's going to happen in the relatively near-term future. But the problem's not getting better, certainly. So, you know, appreciate this and, you know, look forward to the next iteration here. You're saying you're planning on coming back in April, is that right? In terms of a first reading of an ordinance, is that the idea?
Well, I mean, if you guys all love this and say yes, go ahead, then we would clean it up, make it, you know, ordinance-worthy and come back for a first reading. If we get different direction, we'll follow that and adjust the schedule accordingly.
Okay, great. Let's go to Vice Mayor Chow and then Councilmember Moore.
Hey, so I think I'm trying to focus on other things, water bottles, milk, juice bottles, and detergent bottles, these are a lot of plastic. And so we are not, and then, I think I mentioned the company, and I was not really thinking company break rules. For example, Cupertino, we use reusable cups. But, for example, Cupertino Union, they always gave us a plastic water bottle at each board meeting. I bring my own water cup. But then, this is actually common in a lot of companies. They, the employee come to work every day, a lot of- They, the employee come to work every day, a lot of them are still using paper cups. So can we start with our companies? Who probably can be, will be better than our, starting with our food services, who are already vulnerable? Maybe the first phase, let's start with companies to reduce their waste. I think the reason we need to go to reduce is there is just plenty of recyclables, so we need to reduce. Now, even paper cups, plastic cups, and water bottle, milk juice bottles, can we encourage companies to join in to reduce? And then the last one is a question about bioplastic cups made from corn and bamboo. Are they not compostable? So I read that compostable cups provides pollution, because it gets into fine, very fine particles that become pollution. But how about bioplastic ones that's made from plant?
Right, so the bioplastic cups are basically behave like plastic in the environment. They break on into smaller pieces, they don't even dissolve in water. You know, for instance, they're just, you know, photodegrading like, like other kinds of plastics. And those are the plastics that are not wanted in the compost and are not wanted in the recycling, and then become methane in the garbage. So there's, there's just kind of no port in the storm for them. So.
Okay, so can we start with the first phase companies?
Well, companies that provide food would be.
In their own break rooms?
In their own break rooms.
So that we all reduce, so we all use recycle cups. And company parties, a lot of times, they just use a lot of this waste, generate a lot of waste. Like even when we had parents get together, some way we would bring reusable cups, and we'd bring it home and wash. And this is something some people do, but a lot of people are so used to using one-time use thing, that's, it really doesn't take not that much time to take all the utensils home to wash. This is for a party, which many people do. I think we we shouldn't just hurt our food businesses. Everyone have a role in this, not just the people who sell food to us. All the parents who are hosting parties, everyone who hosted party at home. Now, a lot of times, people have party at home with dishwasher, they still use disposable plates and utensils.
Okay, great. Thanks, Vice Mayor Chow. And so let's go on to Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. So I was wondering, Ursula, if you could put up Figure Five, the comparison of the foodware ordinances in the neighboring jurisdictions chart? And, and the reason is, is that I feel like we should be leaders for the region in what we enact as an ordinance. And the problem with plastics has been around for a really long time. While I'm waiting for the chart, yeah, so even my late father had done research on the recycling value of waste, and this was like thirty years ago, and we're still looking at this same problem. And if anything, it's gotten bigger. You know, even our clothing lasts for centuries, it seems. So when I look at this chart, it looks like Mountain View has already enacted something like what we're looking at, correct?
Correct, without the dine-in requirement. So they're not going so far as to requiring reusables for dine-in.
Okay, and I particularly, the way you described the dine-in issue, I really, it seemed like it could actually save money, and I really like that. In fact, there's a restaurant that I frequent, it has dine-in, washable dishes. However, what you take out is this heavy plastic stuff, which takes me so much water and soap in order to get the food particles off, to have it be able to recycle. But I feel like I've just, you know, damaged the environment by using all that water and soap to try to clean it up, just to get it, get it there. So I'm really frustrated with that part. So I wish, it's not a Cupertino restaurant, so. But I wish that they had this requirement to moving to a paper-based container. Now, if we could scroll down to the sale of the single-use foodware section. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I think it's an interesting idea to prohibit the sale of the accessories and plates. I think I don't know about the forks part at this point, but I think that at least no longer selling the plastic dinner plates might, if those are still being sold, if those could be moved to paper, I think that would be quite beneficial. I'm, I think the cup charges, I'm not sure what you were thinking about what that would go for, be used for in the future. Do you have some thoughts on that?
Well, charges, you know, are an incentive to change behavior. So, you know, really, they were popular pre-COVID, right, for bringing your own cup to the store, so we weren't using so many paper cups. It's just a little dicier now with the COVID situation.
Okay, okay, and I was trying to think of, you know, some creative way to work out the boba cup problem. So that, the other part I wasn't quite understanding is, we have these exemptions that you mentioned a few pages earlier. And how would that work? Because we don't want to harm our businesses getting out of the, getting out of the pandemic. How would they apply for an exemption? What are, how would that, that work?
Yeah, we would have to define that process, but basically, they would have to submit something, you know, saying, I I'm not ready to comply by this time because of whatever reason, and then we would go meet with them and learn about what their situation is. And those are details we'd have to, you know, work out with within public works staff, and perhaps with, you know, Chris, of course, and see what we would need to check, what we'd be allowed to check, you know, and how to determine if someone really needs, like, you know, if they really are in an economic hardship, how would we determine that?
Or if the product, if the product requires, or they can demonstrate some need that it needs to be this way, until which time that an identified alternative is found. Yeah, maybe something like that. If that kind of language is, if you're able to put that together for April, I think we would want to have those exemptions kind of defined, so that we aren't we aren't hurting our businesses here. I think that, personally, I think that would be great. Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks, Councilmember Moore. Well, Ursula, I think you have some pretty good feedback from public council as to, you know, trying to address some of these issues. You know, we've heard some concerns that we want to make it a more broad-based effort, if possible. Maybe some outreach to, you know, some of our, you know, larger corporate interests, as well as, you know, fellow agencies, you know, what we can be doing to make it a more kind of across-the-spectrum, you know, approach. You had mentioned a consultant with regard to the restaurant industry. Maybe there are some things that we can be doing. You know, as we were talking, I was Googling kind of reusable boba cup, and, you know, there does seem to be, you know, some tech, well, I don't want to call it technology, but some designs that have been, you know, coming out in the last few years. So, you know, I think the principle is fine to, you know, take a look at what you're doing. We seem to have, you know, strong encouragement to try to, you know, deal with this problem, you know, because frankly, it is a problem. And, you know, our own waste management, you know, company has a former CEO who's, you know, helping to spearhead an effort to try to ban, you know, the least recyclable types of plastics. So, you know, it is something that I think people across the spectrum agree, you know, we need to be looking at. So, yeah, I mean, hopefully, unless I have objections from others on council, hopefully you do come back in April with some, you know, input and feedback points based upon what we've discussed here tonight, and can proceed with, you know, proposing something as an initial reading. And please do, you know, keep on reaching out to our business community and, you know, other other entities and people across, across the entirety of the community as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, well, we are at six thirty, everyone. Let's go ahead and break until the regularly scheduled meeting starts. And let me just check in with our city clerk, Kirsten. We use the same link, right? Everyone just stays on the same video?
That's correct, Mayor, it's the same link.
Okay, great. Okay, well, we'll see you in about fifteen minutes. Thanks for the regular meeting start.